Good morning and welcome everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Logan County Commissioners to order. Today is March 31st, 2022. It is nine o'clock in the morning. Please rise from planks.
Ladies and gentlemen, through the flag of the United States of America and through the Republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thanks you all for attending. Move on to item three. Any citizens desiring to be heard? I've got, I think we've got one, but we're going to be talking about one of the agenda items and I think she's willing to wait until the agenda comes up. Right? Okay. All right. That'll be when we're discussing the ARPA projects. Item four, consideration and possible action on minutes of March 15th, 2022. Move to approve the minutes.
I'll second. I have a motion in the second to approve the minutes and any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. And I am signing the minutes.
All right, item five, consideration of possible action on final plat of South Meadows in the southeast quarter section seventeen dash fifteen north, three west. Ma'am? Pretty clear. Right at the top, right? Top middle.
Top middle?
Yeah, right over where it says South Meadows.
Okay.
Right up here. Oh.
Sure.
See it going? Thank you, ma'am.
Logan County is not responsible for any meetings, repair, or repairs of the roof and windows of South Meadows Division.
I move we approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion in the second to approve the plat. Any further discussion?
Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thanks, Ronnie. Looks to me that's correct, right?
Can we take these right over to the clerk's office and report it and then go get your small copy?
Okay.
No, you have to report it first. When you leave here, just go across the street and get it recorded and then you'll take one of these. You can get the small copy made after it's recorded.
Is that what they just moved to?
No, no, you're, no.
Oh, you can do it now.
They, they have voted on it.
Okay.
You don't have to come back here. I mean, look, you just want to come hang out. We got a few things going.
We throw stuff later if you want to go in there.
What was that?
Said we throw stuff later if you want to go in there.
Right. Okay. Item six, open seal bid number 2022-21 for roof repair replacement of county building located at 219 South Rock, Guthrie, and consideration of possible action on awarding said bid.
We have two bids submitted, one from Evans Roofing and one from Heritage Homes Commercial Services.
Evans is ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Evans?
Yes.
Heritage is sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
It's a pretty good jump. Does one include moving the heating air or the stuff on the roof?
That's why I'm looking for scope of work on it.
Was it not in bid specs to move it? I think that's it down the line.
The scope of work says include all costs associated with moving, disconnecting, and reconnecting all H documents.
You said removal, disconnect, and reconnect? Basically with Heritage Homes, they didn't send any description, work description. They just basically sent all their insurance information.
And a bid.
And a bid.
I would assume it's just on the board, but we might want a table so we can look at it on a regular basis.
Well, the first one's ninety-one thousand, what was it?
Nine forty-eight. Nine forty-eight. Ninety-one, nine four eight.
Sixty-one.
Sixty-seven, seven fifty. They can complete it in seven days. Start on one May.
This one can start fifteenth and sixteenth of May and finish in eight days.
Over a lot more than.
Yeah.
You want to go through it or call and make sure we're all on the same page before we award this bid or you want to go ahead and award it?
I have our Evans on file. We need to make sure that they have their commercial roofing and books. I know Evans does.
I believe everything's there.
Now, these are the folks that fixed the roof on my warehouse, District One. They did a good job. This is Heritage Construction, so they apparently do have a commercial. They got lots of, they got lots of county and local government references here as well.
I'll make the motion here with Heritage.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion in the second to go with the lowest bid as the best at Heritage Construction. Any further discussion?
Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. All right. Item seven, acknowledged receipt of notice of intent to build Horizon Hill Wind Project from Trans Alta Corporation.
Ronnie, is this true?
Yeah, I met with them here a few weeks ago and they got to have a letter of intent to build and we just need to acknowledge. Mainly going to be in northern Logan County. I'd say for Can't Hurt Seventy-three more, Fifty-One Highway, so I'll move if we acknowledge.
I'll second.
I have a motion in the second to acknowledge the receipt of notice of intent to build. Any further discussion?
On that subject, we need to be working on a road use agreement. They got to have a road use agreement, but I kind of had a ten point that I sent the locals, so we'll see what comes.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Ronnie. So do we want to put that road use agreement on the fifteenth of April?
I'm not sure how long it'll take. I'll look over it, several pages, and I sent two, so let me get some word back from him and then we'll get on.
All right, sir.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item eight, consideration of possible action on resolution to elect standard revenue loss provisions for ARPA funds currently on account in the amount of four million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and approval of subaccount allocations for approval, approved projects and premium pay provisions in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. I'd also draw your attention to the addendum. This item is also the, is the same item, but it has a little greater detail of what we're talking about. So what we're, what we're discussing here is the recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. Set and talked with every, everyone that's involved in this process and we've gone through and discussed what the primary projects will be. And so what we've, what we've looked at and what we've recommended is of the current four point six five million dollars that we have, that one point three five be deposited in our six-story building fund, one point five million to the Commissioners, Roads and Bridges. That will be divided three ways, a half a million each. Sheriff's Detention Facility and Repair and Patrol Vehicle Refresh, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or point seven five million. Courthouse Campus Security System, this is for new, new doors as needed, the card key system implementation, and this is not, not just at the main courthouse, but our entire campus where we need to have that type of a system. Then point three million or three hundred thousand for employee premium pay as we discussed earlier and point two five million or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Health Department Drive Thru. Our county currently has, again, four point six five million dollars on deposit and with distribution as recommended above, we will also receive an additional four point six five million in May of this year, which the entire amount of the four point six five that we get in May should be deposited in the six-story remodel and that will bring that to a total of six million dollars for that building remodel. County appropriations does not require excess board approval on, on ARPA funds. Unencumbered or excess funds may only be transferred between the above ARPA projects' cash accounts with approval by the Board of County Commissioners. All ARPA funds must be encumbered not later than twenty-four or December of 2024 and must be expended not later than 2026. And with that, what I'd like to do, Mr. Hickson was scheduled to be here, so we can delay the six-story building discussion. Commissioners, Road and Bridge, is any, any questions, concerns there?
Oh, I just already have it invited, but I think we'll have to invite it by one and all of the, District Three.
We can, we can vote on that if you'd like.
That's been a little greedy, I see.
We can vote on that if you'd like. All right. Thank you, sir. Sheriff's Detention Facility and Patrol Vehicle Refresh, Sheriff, any, any comments, concerns on that?
No, sir, I don't have any.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Courthouse Campus Security System, between, between the sheriff and, and again, Mr. Hickson, the sheriff is ultimately responsible for the security of, of the courthouse and those sorts of things. So when we get, when we get finished with that, if, well, I'll, I'll go over that. Anyway, that's, that's kind of the sheriff and, and Mr. Hickson's project to, to look at as well. Employee premium pay, we have three hundred thousand dollars dedicated to that. Ma'am, would you like to discuss premium pay? I know you've got a lot of detail on that because you know.
If you want to do it now or with the next agenda item, which is the resolution to approve the premium pay.
Can we just combine all three agenda items to, to one?
Well, the number eight and this one is one agenda item, so.
Number eight in the addendum, he's going to combine. But eight and nine, because they are resolutions, I think they should be handled separately.
They're separate resolutions, but if you'd like to talk about.
So the, the premium pay under the final rules of the feds is a, is a form of, and I have the verbiage from the final rule, premium pay can be thought of as a hazardous pay. It applies to those employees that worked through the pandemic, had to either deal with people one-on-one or the rules call it handling of items that were handled by others to qualify. The, the three hundred thousand dollars would allow a dollar eighty per hour of two one thousand hours' work in the period of time, April one, 2020 to May thirty-one, 2020, for county employees that were, so you're looking at eighteen hundred dollars per employee in premium pay available as a form of a hazardous pay under the federal rules.
Okay. And that'll be a resolution that outlines all that is on item nine that we will get to here shortly. One of the other things that, that I wanted to mention, with premium pay and all the other projects, little projects, smaller projects that would come after this, as funds are left over from these main projects that we've talked about, because there, I think we've allocated plenty of, of funding to get these things done. So as those, as funds are left over, after these projects are done, then it'll be up to the board to determine what other small projects that, that we'll do. What I don't want to do is just turn this thing loose and everybody decide, you know, that, well, I, I want to, you know, a new rug or I want a new this or a new that. And it doesn't really coincide with what we've talked about. And we start spending money on that and then at the end of the day, we don't have enough money to finish the projects that we started.
Earlier in your comments, you said that this money can only be transferred into these different accounts.
To, to start with. We can do, we can make any account. We can, we can change this at any time that you guys want to. This is just my recommendation to get started, right? And for example, the Courthouse Campus Security System, that's half a million dollars. I doubt very seriously if we spend a half a million dollars on that. And at that point, we've got other projects on the campus here that, that need to be done and, and we can address doing those at that time. But what I want to, what I would like to do, what I would recommend we do is that we, we take on the primary project first, give bids, determine what it's going to cost to do that, and then after that, we can consider other projects that we'd like to do.
Yeah, that was my concern is, is that money being bound to that project only and we can't move it, so.
Well.
If we can come back and move it, because I think we need to do some remodeling in the courthouse, which wasn't all under security.
Right, right. And the other thing that we also need to consider is that we, we've saved a lot of money in the general fund to do those kind of construction projects in the courthouse as well. So, so yes, sir, I, I agree, but right now, this is, this is what we're, we're, we're trying to get these projects completed and then as funds are left over, it's up to us to figure out, you know, what we want to do with leftovers, including, I want, I'll go back to the premium pay, employee premium pay. We could give another round of employee premium pays as we wrap this up and get closer to the December 2024 requirement. I mean, there's a lot of things we can do with this, but.
As long as they're not bound.
Well, we, we.
We are, but we're not.
Well, we're trying to get these projects accomplished first and then we can do whatever, Ronnie, whatever we decide is best for the county, for this money.
I caught on a comment that, you know, that we can transfer back and forth between counts, but we could develop another count, but you said we can't, so.
Well, of course we can. Yeah, I mean, it's, we're, it's our, it's our, our, our deal. It's, it's the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, everyone's got their teeth on this.
Yes, they do, right up to our belt line. All right. So anything else on employee premium pay? All right. Health Department Drive Thru Building. Ma'am, I know you, you'd like to talk to the board and help yourself.
I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself again. I'm Maggie Jackson and I'm the interim regional director for our, our district. So I don't think I've been able to meet you in a while, so, and thank you, Mr. Goodman, for coming out and seeing our needs. We just wanted to take the chance to recognize that we run an efficient operation, but our building has been tight during COVID and we got to partner with the Fairgrounds and that was a, a great benefit test, but we did pay for those utilities. So having a space of our own, even though COVID was a unique response where we gave over twenty-five thousand vaccines from our health department. And so those vaccines are a yearly occasion now, will continue to provide flu shots. And the most important clients that come are those vulnerable and elderly folks and being able to stay in their car is something we've tried for years where they don't have to get out and walk. We had them waiting in lines and in the weather. So that's one of our first needs that we would like to be able to offer that. But daily operations would actually really be improved by this extra space. We have vaccine freezers where we're having to keep them in a break room. We need that extra secure storage. We keep a lot of PPE and ENID and that's where all our supplies go. We have a warehouse up there actually where we get pallets full of PPE. If we could keep that, more of that locally here in Guthrie, we don't have room in our building for much supply, so we'd love to be able to store PPE. And we do have our mobile unit. This is something that we've planned for to maintain and make useful. Right now, it's being stored in Yukon and the idea of this mobile team is that they would serve our rural communities. That's what we're there for. So being able to keep it here in Guthrie, we feel like would be a much better launching place to reach our rural places. So Stacy brought these for me just to describe what we offer through this mobile program. And by having this facility, we could maintain it better, keep it safe, and it would help us make that program last for years for our rural communities. I just appreciate considering our plans and needs. We've started reaching out to some local contractors. We haven't had any come on site yet to give us a really good picture of that bid, what it, what it costs to be, but we feel like we could, you know, stretch, stretch extra funds as much as we can and put them to get used for long-term future, so.
Right. So one of the things that, that we'd like to help you with is developing those specifications for bid.
Yes.
And because it's all going to go through the county bid process, right? And, and so that's something that we've already discussed. The other thing was I wanted to bring to, to the board's attention is we discussed the possibility.
Terry Hickson.
The possibility of having a severe weather shelter in, in this new building that they're, they're looking to build.
Terry Hickson.
Sorry. And off.
So where would you think about building this?
We have the section right south of our building. We've got a few trees, so it would take some dirt work to kind of level that out, but that's where we're hoping, as well as the area where the trailer is.
Yeah, the, the other area that, that I was looking at, they're looking for a drive-thru. And as the house trailer that's, that sits there is relocated out of there, that's built up on a pad already.
That would be better.
And the, the challenge that we have working in there is it's in a flood plain, right? So you can't take dirt in, can't move dirt, you can't take dirt out, but we can relocate the dirt, right? And so that pad can be pushed over closer to that tree line where, where they're at and a driveway could be built that would go into the front along that tree line and then circle back around and back behind the building. It was just something that I saw when I was out there that, that is a possibility. There's a lot of possibilities out there, but behind their, their current building may be a bit tight. Again, it would, it would depend on how much dirt we can move from where the trailer is sitting now over to the, to the back for, for that, but.
I mean, that was my concern. I didn't know if they was thinking about adding on to the building, which I don't think we could being in the flood zone.
No, I, I think it would be, it would be a stretch.
Right.
But I, I think we could with, you know, some of the equipment that the county owns, we can, we can move some dirt. And if, what, I think what we need to do is one of these days, just go out and look at it and hearing the short and, and figure out what, what's the best footprint, you know, to put in there. The other thing that, that we talked about was our ability to help with asphalt parking lot once all this is done. I think, you know, if we could recoup the funds for the materials, you know, we've got the ability to lay asphalt and do that kind of stuff. It's a taxpayer's little money if we were able to do that.
So what, what size of drive-thru building are we talking about?
It's a square footage. Forty-five, thirty, thank you.
Forty-five, thirty.
It's a little taller than normal because they want to access it with their, so van or their mobile unit.
It's like an RV fifth-wheel trailer.
Here on the picture.
And actually on the pictures of van, but we also have a fifth-wheel trailer that we'd love to keep.
So I've got, I've got another quick question before you while you're here. Our, our volunteers have fallen off on Red Cross here locally because of some of the requirements that have been put on them. With your mobile unit being close here, if it was, if it was sitting here, and we have it was sitting here, and we have, uh, an emergency, we have tornadoes, all that kinda stuff, is that something that y'all would consider relocating your van out to help with people?
Absolutely. Recently, the, there was a tornado in Kingston, um, that, that mobile trailer is designed to be for emergency response, too. We can offer services to people in a disaster response.
Okay, I know Steve would be happy to hear that.
Yes, I need to talk to him about that. That's an asset that we'll use for multiple reasons.
Okay, great. Any other questions, gentlemen?
I don't have any.
Nothing. Anything else, ma'am?
Uh, I appreciate you hearing me out and, uh, considering our needs, and thank you so much. Let me know if I can answer anything else.
Forty, forty by thirty is just small, I think.
Yeah, it is, it is. And, and, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is, I think, more than enough to, to do that.
It's not a whole lot of square foot.
Twelve by forty.
Yeah.
It's like the original plan, was forty by forty, that we just didn't know if we could fit that behind that building, where the limited space was, that's why we were trying to stay within that square footage.
How long is your mobile unit?
Twenty-five feet? I think it's longer than that.
Oh, it's about thirty.
I think it's about thirty. I'm sorry, I don't know, but I, we think it's about thirty.
I know we were gonna have to have a height, um, fourteen to clear it, thirteen to fourteen.
So if the building's thirty foot long, you're gonna have problems closing the doors with that in there.
Okay, well, those things are, we have yet to figure out.
We'll, uh, we'll, we'll help you with, with some of that, too.
Yeah, we don't have drawings yet.
I, uh, I, that's your part of the world out there, isn't it, huh?
Yeah. Um, I know you can't build them big enough. I'm not trying to talk in and spend more taxpayer money, but if you're gonna build it, you just as well as do it right.
Yeah.
And having that storm shelter would be, you know, that second ask that we'd like to offer our staff to keep them safe. Thank you.
All right, so we've talked a little bit about the fairgrounds area. There, um, anything you'd like to add to this? No, I say, I, I think that's a great plan, and, and I'm, I'm like, Marty, I probably would say it, it probably needs to at least be forty by forty, just to be safe from what they're wanting to do with it.
All right, so, with, uh, with that, I'll, uh, open it up for consideration, uh, and action on, uh, on these ARPA projects with the funding that we've put into them.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I will second. Any further discussion? Eric Nunn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sounds like it passed unanimously.
It said aye.
Aye.
Yeah. I can read lips, but I couldn't see through his head.
It's closed.
You have a line of ears, though.
Oh, yeah, there is a spot, okay.
So, why does this resolution also have premium pay on it?
Because the feds, for the money, we had to designate which category of the permitted categories of use we had to designate. Premium pay is a separate category under the federal rule. Revenue loss was one of the categories, which is where the projects are.
I, I'm just confused why we have to have two items on here to, to finish this. Okay.
If I name.
Yes.
The second item about premium pay, the first item was, we were designating that category to be used. The second item for the premium pay resolution is actually establishing the amounts and the period of time.
I thought the amounts were on the first one, but.
Just the, the total three hundred. This breaks it down to the per hour and the date times.
I see. All right. With that, we'll move on to item nine, consideration of possible action on resolution establishing premium pay for qualifying county employees presented to ARPA final rule.
So the details of this resolution as written would be a dollar eighty per hour up to a thousand hours' work in the time period April one, twenty twenty to May thirty-one, twenty-one. It also requires that the employee must still be employed with Logan County as of April one of twenty-two.
Slow it one, where is it sitting?
Well, the feds are pretty, you know, they, they like all these rules and requirements, so.
This is the same one that Deb sent out?
Yeah.
I've seen it.
Yeah. We'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for premium pay. Any further discussion? Eric Nunn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Item ten, consideration of possible action concerning subcontractor estimates for restoration of the county annex, six-story building, requiring an update by Mr. Hickson. I can try and get him back on the phone again. He's tried to call me a couple of times, says y'all have heard since we've been here.
Is that two boxes of doughnuts, or?
I think so. Uh, what, did I owe?
Yeah.
Uh, well, he called me.
You have your phone on.
I did. I think you got me there. I think you got me there.
I'm wondering, no.
Are you?
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Hickson, this is Marvin Goodman. You're on, uh, speakerphone at our, uh, board of commissioners meeting.
Oh, okay.
I wanted to let you know that upfront, so you didn't say anything embarrassing.
I'm all right, you know?
Yes, sir. I, um, we, uh, I, I may have miscommunicated with you at, uh, I thought we were gonna have you here today. Uh, I don't know what your schedule's like. If you're able to, to chat with us about, um, the subcontractor estimates for the restoration of the county's six-story building.
Correct.
And, and then we, we wanted to, also, we've got on the agenda the ZFI engineering, uh, services proposal. Uh, and I know you had some, some comments on that as well. So, if you've got time this morning, we would appreciate, uh, hearing from you.
Uh, I do have time. Uh, you want me to head that way, or do you wanna do this over the phone?
Uh, we're, I think we're okay doing it over the phone, so I'm agreeable.
Okay.
Yeah, with it.
Well, to give you an update on the estimate, the, the one that, uh, I'm doing, I have a completed per-dollar amount, but, uh, I talked to Otis Elevator, who was very interested in meeting with me, and that was, um, oh, early last week. It's been over a week. He reassured me that we're gonna get back with me, meet me over there, and, uh, give me some information, uh, about a seven-story elevator, because it does go up to the roof. Um, but I hadn't heard from him, so, uh, would, would, if you, you all are okay, I would like to plug my number into my estimate that I think it's worth. And if they get back with me, but well, they will get back with me, but soon as they do, I can always just change that number to come up with a new total, but at least you would have the estimate in front of you of each, the value of each trade that I've been working with.
I'm, I'm good with them plugging that number. I mean, we've probably got a pretty rough idea.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're good with that, Terry.
Yeah. So y'all were good with that?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. Was just a matter of me writing it up and, and listing each trade out. Uh, and I can give you copies of their quotes, if, if you want. I didn't know if you all wanted those on the record or not.
Um, I think we should have one, just.
Yeah, I, I, we should have an official copy of what their quotes were.
Okay. Well, then, uh, give me next week to put that together, and I will.
Okay.
Uh, submit three copies, and then give, give you all a few days, and you tell me when to come to the next, uh, board meeting and answer questions.
Our next board meeting is, uh, next Monday.
A week from this Monday, or this coming Monday?
This coming Monday.
Okay. That might be a little quick for me to put that together, but, uh, let me see what I can do. I was trying to get it in your hands, so you had time to review it before we met.
Right. So, uh, that, that's fine. Our, our meeting after that will be around the fifteenth. I haven't looked at the calendar to see when that falls. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. I would prefer the fifteenth.
Okay.
To give me time to put a little booklet together for you all.
All right, we'll do that then. Thanks, Terry.
Okay.
Fifteen. All right. Uh, any, any further questions on the six-story building? Yeah, okay. Uh, so no action, uh, on that. Uh, item eleven, consideration of possible action on proposal of ZFI engineering for structural engineering services on the six-story building. Um, first of all, Terry, I appreciate you pointing out some of the anomalies of that bid. Uh, one of them being that all the work products would stay the property of ZFI engineering, uh, including, uh, architectural, uh, designs. Um, and I think that's something that is of concern to the board, but I'll let the other commissioners speak to that. Uh, and then there are three proposals on that, and I think the one that we really wanted them to do was to determine which walls, uh, could be structurally removed, or be removed without interfering with the integrity of the building. So, with that, with that, gentlemen, I'll open up the questions that, that you may have.
I, I don't like the, the fact that any work that they do would become their property. I mean, that's, that's definitely one of my concerns also, but, uh, the minimal scope of work that we had, for them to determine which walls are gonna be load-bearing, I think was really what we were looking for.
That, to me, would be your, my biggest concern right now is can we take walls out and just leave columns in to open the space up? Um, I don't have any questions about the structure of the building, 'cause it's poured-in-place concrete, and it, it shows no signs of, of any movement at all. Um, I think that was a middle-range number, seventy-nine hundred, something like that.
Yeah, and I think the four, first one was forty-nine hundred.
Yeah, I think the forty-nine hundred.
Thousand, once you proceed with this project, the architect, too high air, will have to do that anyway. So if they're not willing to give you a CAD file, or a, you know, a zip file, something that has all that information on it, then there's no reason to pay it twice.
I, I agree.
That will have to be done to draw plans on what walls come out, and, you know, what your layout is. But, um, but I just think we need to know which, the guy kinda indicated just a ten-minute look, he had the same opinion I did, that, uh, that clay block that they laid in there was never used for structural. So, I really think he's going to, once he does a few, uh, inspections and testing, uh, we're gonna find that the majority of those walls could come out. Interior walls I'm talking about.
That, that's where I, I'd like to see done, is, is number one, have him come in and tell us what we can take out, what we can't take out. Yeah, and that's.
Yes, and I didn't ask him when he gave me that report. Uh, is, is this something he should be able to get right on it in a couple of weeks' time, give you some answers.
But on the, uh, on the other part, where they're gonna own all the data when they're done, I'm out on that deal. If I'm gonna pay the guy, I'm going on the data.
So that was, the concern on that was having them come in, actually, they would hire a subcontractor to come in and do the laser, uh, measurements of all the rooms and floors and, and, and put a drawing.
That is correct.
Put a drawing together for that.
Otherwise, it's gonna retain that, uh, information, and, and like I say, if there was an agreement that once you got this project up and running and hired an architect, that they would have access to that at no charge, then it's okay to go ahead and pay it now. You can pay it now or pay it later. But if it's, if they're gonna char, recharge just to give somebody else that information, uh, I just wouldn't do it.
So Terry, uh, could you also kind of, uh, speak to some of the contentious issues between architects and builders, and, uh, how, how we need to probably pursue hiring a, a couple of firms that are working together to our benefit?
Yes, I can. I can only speak from my experience. You, you do run into, if you hire an architect and put it out to bed, you're opening up to any contractor that can, is financially able to bond the job, payment performance bond, you can't really turn them away. So, you're running the risk of having an architect and a contractor that had past, uh, the circle relationships, and from day one, it's a problem job, because they hate each other. Uh, where I found my big, biggest success and my most happy customers was you'd get, uh, a construction manager who is a general contractor, but you make them, when you advertise the job, you want a team, you want a team of a contractor and an architectural and engineering firm that have past experience together, that have good working relationships, and that's when you give them the budget and say, guys, this is all we got. You gotta make it work, and they will. They'll figure out a way. So, most, the state does this all the time, and I'm not sure why counties do, but normally they just put the jobs out to bed, and, and it is what it is, and you sit back and watch them fight and decide who's, who's right and who's wrong.
Well, we certainly don't want this to turn into a fight. We'd like to see it done.
No, but it would be very pleasant to meet with a contractor and architect every couple of weeks to get an update, and, and it, it'd be a very positive experience. There, there are gonna be some unknowns somewhere in there that, that you have to deal with, but, uh, it's just a, a different approach. You get the same product at the end, but a different approach.
Okay.
So there again, that's, that's totally up to you guys to advertise for an architect, have them draw the plans. The, the one nice thing about a construction manager is, if they start drawing something that isn't in the budget, the, the construction manager's gonna speak up right away, say, wait, wait a minute, wait, does that work? And, and, 'cause he gives estimates at forty percent, and sixty percent, and ninety percent. So when the plans come out, the construction manager is pretty confident that the bids are gonna come in within the budget, that they were, you were giving them to work with. Does that make sense?
It does to me, and, and.
Yeah. So I guess my question would be, can we just not proceed on scope one, just to see what we can take out, can't take out, and?
So there's, there's three scopes, right, right?
So the second one is, I think it's what we, and I haven't looked at.
Yeah, yeah, it's scope two.
It's sensitive.
Yeah, I think we should pursue scope two to see, you know, from, from that standpoint. But.
Thirty-nine.
I don't, I don't know if they're tied together, if that's scope one and scope two, if you gotta do scope one before they'll do scope two, you know? But we can, we can certainly find out, and, and I think that's the recommendation from the board and that's what I'd like as well. Uh, I'd be happy to pursue that with, with the engineering group.
Well, if we can, I'd like to do task two to start with, just to see what we can do.
Right.
We gotta know that before we do anything else.
I, I agree.
I agree.
So. And task two on here is thirty-nine hundred. Do, do you have a copy of that Terry, of this?
I do on my computer, I'm not in front of that, but I, I do have a copy of it.
Troy refreshed my.
You're referring to the, the interior walls?
Yes.
I think that was the thirty-nine hundred dollar number?
Yes, sir.
The lowest of the three?
That's correct.
And I think that's all you need to know right now, you just do the structural engineer say, yeah, you can take those walls out.
Right. Did, did we not, I thought we voted on this and passed this, maybe we just discussed.
We, we did, but we didn't have a, a cost at the time.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, they've come back with three options, right? And I think what would be appropriate is for us to say, uh, if, you know, we wanna just select one of those options at a certain price range and then prove, prove pursuing that, uh, and see how they react to it.
So do you need a motion for, is it task two?
Yes, sir. I mean, I, I don't mind making that motion.
Yeah. I don't mind either.
Okay. My first step.
I'll move that we proceed on task two at the cost of thirty-nine hundred dollars.
Oh, a second. I have a motion and a second to, uh, pursue task two at a cost of thirty-nine hundred dollars for structural engineering services of ZFI engineering, any further discussion?
I, a question, can, can we go ahead and draw a PO out of the ARPA money for that thirty-nine hundred, or we have to do that after?
We can draw it out of ARPA funds at the beginning of next month, the way I understand it.
Yes.
Because we've got, we will have deposited a million, what was it? Uh, a million point three five in the building fund already. So, uh, Troy will let us know when, when that, when those funds are available, but it'll be sometime mid, probably mid next week.
I just have to create, the, the treasurer and I, well, all those different accounts will get created and moved around and.
Right.
Yep, so after Monday.
Okay, okay, that's, that's my motion.
Okay, uh, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing then, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hickson, anything else?
Uh, that's all I got, uh, I will definitely be there the fifteenth, just waiting.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, bye. Two boxes of donuts, son. Two rings.
Should've turned it off on the first one.
Okay, now we're on to item twelve, consideration possible action concerning a countywide burn ban and, including discussion of local fire departments implementing countywide modification, notification requirement for intent to burn when not under burn ban. So, uh, first thing, uh, are, are we at a point where we wanna look at another burn ban, or do we wanna wait on that? We've had a little moisture, uh, we've had a lot of wind up in our part of the world, we didn't get a lot of rain, but.
You know, I, I mean, I don't mind it if we meet the criteria, I just don't know if we meet it.
Right.
I checked the weather before we came over here and there's significant rain in the forecast for the weekend.
And tomorrow's.
Whether it really hits or not is.
Yeah, that's like rolling dice, right?
Starting tomorrow and then going Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
But I think the criteria says in the forecast.
Okay, can we place this back on the agenda for Monday?
Yes.
Alright, with that.
I'm good, sounds good to me.
Alright, so, so no action on that. Uh, one of the things that I've, I've noticed is, you know, we've got a, a little Facebook site for our emergency management and the guys, the, the fire departments out there are trying to do good, right, they're trying to do good. And, but I think as, as our guys post that stuff onto the emergency management site, it carries over from, uh, maybe fire districts and municipalities to countywide, right? And people get confused because, uh, a, a, a local fire district will, will say something like, before you burn, call this number even in when we're not under, let us know ahead of time. Well, the, the people in, in Mahol read that and, you know, it's like, why, why would they call South County to, you know, burn trash in Mahol? It, because I don't think that, I don't think that that information's getting passed between all the local fire districts. So I, I, I just wanted to, to kinda talk about that briefly, maybe real briefly, but uh, it's something that we, I wish Stephen was here, uh, you know, that, it, it's kinda something more, more along the lines of, you know, what we put out can, can cause some confusion.
Right, yeah.
Anyway. Any, any other con, uh, conversation on that? Alright, hearing, hearing then, we'll, uh, no action twelve, move on to item thirteen. Consideration possible action of use and or disposal of county land in and around Meridian, Oklahoma, I got pictures. And one of the things that we've discussed, uh, using this for, um, the sheriff and I have talked about it briefly as well. Uh, Damon, would you like to? Sir, would you like to come up and chat a little bit about this?
I wasn't set to, oh. Just tell me how to get those done.
Yes, sir. We, uh, we're all out of donuts and so we're gonna carry on. So, uh, what I've, what I've given you is, uh, the, uh, the city flat here at the bottom in, in yellow, that's all the incorporated, uh, parts of Meridian America. And then there's a, there, there's also an unincorporated area over there, um, that, that, and the county owns property on both. As you can see in the incorporated area, uh, at the top, there's a, a, looks like a dugout area and it, and it is. That was originally going to be a sewage, um, site for the town of Meridian, they were gonna put in there, that's what that. Um, look good? Yeah, look good, thank you, sir. That, that's what, uh, they had acquired that property for, but they acquired it with, um, a, a grant that the county, uh, was responsible for. And so when they, uh, didn't follow through for whatever reason, uh, and this is over a course of what, fifteen, twenty years?
Not well, ten to fifteen.
Yeah. Uh, then it finally became the property of the county, and so the county owns this land. Uh, we've discussed, you know, putting a, a, a firing range out there. I, I know we've, uh, we've been in some discussions before, uh, right now we can use the, the city of Gasreeds firing range, uh, and it's, uh, at their discretion whether or not we can go out there or not. Uh, one of the, the challenges that we have with that is that the, uh, employees of the county really can't go out there and, and use that unless they're part of the sheriff's department. Uh, and one of the things that we want, that I wanted to look at was the ability to put something out there that our, our county employees can use to, to practice or, and or, um, I went up to Stillwater and shot at a gun range up there that was open to, to the public, this club operates it. And that gun range sits on city property there, the city of Stillwater owns it up around the lake. And they lease it out to this, this gun range. And on that same range is also, um, a, a gun range that the Stillwater SWAT team and police use for their qualifications as well. So I, I know that can be done, I mean, the county, if the city can lease it out, the county could lease it out as well. But, uh, to, to look at doing something like that long-term, or, uh, as Monty you brought up, uh, you know, if, if we're not gonna do something with it, we probably should sell it, you know, and, and so I thought it was time to discuss it again. I know, uh, the sheriff and I have talked a little about it, um, so with that, I'll open it up to conversation.
Yes, sir. You wanna build a range?
Well, I think it'd be, you know, the advantage this property has is being able to shoot four hundred yards for our rifles and stuff like that. I mean, having, uh, a, a place that, that we can go out there anytime we want to without making sure that nobody's using it, without saying we can get a key. Um, you know, it's definitely something we're interested in, but, but also understanding that this is kinda property, if you guys wanna sell it, you can sell it.
And if we're gonna utilize it, I'm okay with that, but if we're not gonna utilize it, I think we could get rid of it. But, you know, if you have a need for it, if it was, if you could do your training there, I'm, I'm all about it.
Yeah, we could definitely use it and, and, you know, we could probably do a lot of the improvements, of course, with our, there of course we have, uh, that, that did a lot of our, our rebuilding stuff across the street. So I mean, cost-wise, uh, wouldn't be a huge cost for us to make this usable. We've got targets, we've got all that stuff, we just have to do framing and something for the targets, but it's definitely something we could use.
So just for conversation, like the city of Gasreeds, do, do they use their shooting range a lot, or, I mean, I don't know anything about.
Well, I mean, they have.
Kind of training or?
Well, they have, uh, their basic qualifications and some training courses out there, it's open to their, their officers anytime they're out there and shoot.
I don't have an issue if the sheriff can use it, I mean.
Commissioner Ellis, this is in your part of the world out there.
I, I don't have an issue with it, I mean, that's, it's something that I've talked to a couple of the deputies about, about, about the, the county having a, a shooting range, not only for the sheriff's department, but for county employees and, you know, even the possibility of having one that's open to the public, but, I don't know about having a county shooting range up in Beale, we could, I don't know how our insurance would cover that.
There'd be some liability challenges.
So, um, the, the, the only issue is, uh, the access to that property out there. I was just out there a week ago and, uh, it's gonna take a lot of work to kinda build that back up and, uh, if you need help doing that, I'm sure we can get you some help.
This access to Main Street, right, turning through there, that, that little, after it gets past the red line, the real red line right there, uh, it becomes a.
I need a board, I need a, a white board to start keeping track of the donuts over there.
Yeah.
Hey, that was my phone, that's my labor.
Yeah, we, we drove through, I mean, that's real deep through there, as, as you know.
Yes.
I've been out there in my pickup truck and, uh, I, we drove all the way to the end out here where this little house is at. And it, that, that was passable about a year and a half ago, two years ago, and.
It was pretty muddy a, a week ago right after the raids.
I'll bet it was.
It's not when it gets much rain, I try to keep that in mind.
So, uh.
So as far as, you know, but as far as, you know, as far as opening up something like that to the public, you could figure out like a lease agreement or where, um, like if, say, Storming was gonna hold a class and he needed a place to hold a class, he could come to the deal, fill out an application, reserve it, bring proof of insurance, the whole deal, uh, instead of just being, just open to the public.
Right.
Because the last thing we need is, is somebody going out there that doesn't know what they're doing and, and getting somebody hurt.
Right.
Uh, but I think that if we do it in such a way that, that the public has access to the application process, where the exclusive use process, to, to be able to show proof of insurance and, and all the requirements that, that we would have, I think that's something that could be done.
Okay. I could, I could also get with that.
Yeah, if there's.
Stillwater, you know, gun range, it'll give you the rifle and pistol range, uh, and find out what their insurance requirements are and that kinda stuff.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we have fifteen acres there, correct?
Seventeen?
Seventeen acres.
No, maybe it's fifteen. I can't remember off the top of my head.
It's, yeah, more than five. So, yeah, we can, we can shoot, I mean, there's, there's like a hun, we can get a hundred yard, maybe two hundred yard range in there, it's not, not a problem for that. The, the challenge, the only challenge that we would have is the possibility of, uh, that being in, some of it being in the incorporated area of Meridian, you'd have to coordinate with them to make sure everybody was happy with that. But I think if we were impacting in that area rather than firing from that area, it would be a, a different, a different deal.
Some of that could be used as parking, all of that as a incorporated part. So the, the other access that I was looking at was off Prairie Grove, if, if you, there's a, there's a tree line and a fence line that comes up, uh, to the north from Prairie Grove that, that comes into that corner of that. If we were going to, uh, you know, if we were gonna put a road into that property, that would be the shortest way to do it and probably, you know, the least bugged down. Because like you said, Cody, that, that Main Street over there is a mess.
Yes, it is. Very narrow, very deep. But would we have to buy an easement for that from the property owner there to, to the south?
It all depends on the property owner, I guess. Sometimes they will, you know, just donate an easement as well, but, um, until we ask those questions, we don't know.
Okay.
And there's no, I mean, there's trees in there right now, so.
Well, the, the first little, those trees right on would be part of County Right Way. That's a section line, so we have the thirty-three feet from center.
Right.
And then behind those trees is what is the, and I think someone at one time was forming it, I don't know if they still are.
You're talking about the trees?
Yeah, this would be part of County Right Way because that's off, off the section line.
Well, yeah, but only thirty-three feet in.
Right.
Going this way.
Right, so it's back behind the trees is what would be.
What I'm talking about is putting a road in right here.
Oh.
Alright, so, um, so we, uh, I think we agree that we, we wanna use this property then?
Yeah, that's the way I would say it.
As we can?
Yeah, utilize it.
Okay, so, uh, utilize it for, for firing range, practice range for the, for the county sheriff and um, employees and community as, uh, as can be allowed, right? I guess.
As approved?
As approved, yes, sir.
You know, at one time OSU was thinking about doing a firing range out there for the kids and.
Right.
FFA and.
Right, that's shotgun range, yeah.
So could, could you work with them as well?
Yes, sir, absolutely. They have it, yeah.
I mean, I don't know why it never, I'm, because we gave.
I can tell you why, because the young man that was in charge of that, that wanted to make that happen, got reassigned. And once he got reassigned, nobody else from OSU wanted to pick up anything, he had to do with firearms. Just gonna put that out there. Okay, so, uh, so I'll make a motion that we, uh, take action to use, uh, that county land for a, a, a firing range, uh, for firearms range. Any other discussion? Have a second?
One second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. All right. Thank you, guys. Item 14, consideration of possible action concerning the Logan County Red Cross vaccination policy requirements for local volunteers. I put this on here, I know we'd like to have Stephen back to talk about this, but we, again, looking at that social media page that we put out, Stephen was very complimentary of the Red Cross, as he should be, but asked them if they would be interested in helping us a little more like we have in the past. Well, that opened up a whole tub of worms. And so what has happened is the American Red Cross has put on requirements that you either have to have a COVID vaccination or wear a mask anytime you go out and volunteer to do it. Well, we've lost about eight volunteers over that here in Norton County. And so that cut, that cut down on our volunteer staff by a great deal. So I, you know, I don't know how to get the Red Cross to change their policy, but it's really affected our ability to respond in emergencies or the ability to respond in emergencies to the people that live here. So this is something that I, I really wanted to bring to the board's attention. If we can get somebody to come in here and talk to us about it, I've called the Red Cross in Stillwater, and they, first of all, you can't get a person to talk to. You can't talk to a real person over there. You can talk to a machine that bounces year-round. And, and so I left a message on the, if you want to volunteer to be a, if you want to be a volunteer, you know, press this number. So I figured, well, that's as close as I'm going to get. So I pressed that number. And then I got another recorder that said, leave your information and we'll get back with you. Okay. So I left my information and no one's got back with me. So anyway, I, I do know that the attorney general of Oklahoma is suing quite a few people, now quite a few organizations, over the vaccination policies they have, the requirements they have. And I'm just wondering if we would be interested in putting a resolution together to the state attorney general, asking him to take action on the American Red Cross for this policy because it's negatively impacting our ability to provide services to the people of Logan County during emergencies.
Can we put this back on for Monday? Let me study on that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Absolutely. Ma'am, can we move that to Monday as well?
Do you want this exact same item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's in there, Mr. ...
Okay. All right. So no action today. We'll revisit this on Monday. Thank you, gentlemen. Item 15, consideration of possible action on egress/ingress agreement with Click Family Farms for clearing of trees and brush on right away.
They're going to allow us to stack the brush on earth property, and we'd like to clean up the right ways.
I'll make the motion we approve that.
I will second.
I appreciate it.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 16, consideration of possible action on resolution accepting $1,475 and 20 cents from Oak Tree Farms LLC, District 2, for culvert placed on County Road 74. This...
I was just going to make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second. I mean, you still talk to me.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 17, consideration of possible action on resolution accepting $2,000 donation from Viper Farms Coats to District 3 for approximately 160 tons of rock placed on Pine Street between State Highway 51 and County Road 60.
Mr. Viper does this about four times a year.
Yes, he does.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved unanimously. There you go. All right. Item 18, consideration of possible action on Oklahoma Department of Energy Management and Homeland Security in the amount of $800 for reimbursement Logan County Emergency Management for training. Stephen's not here, so I assume that this is something that...
Yes. I don't know how. He brought this to me before he left. There is grant money available in the amount up to 100, $800, and it's to reimburse for the training that he's at this week.
Okay.
This back one is for the board, and these others are just...
I'll move, we approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the funding. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Marvin, Marvin's signature. All right. Item 19, consideration of possible action on resolution for disposing of equipment for sheriff's office.
This is for equipment that was previously, like sometime that declared certificated by the board, Ms. Lane's vehicles, and have now been sold through purple wave auction. So this is just a follow-up on the, that they were disposed.
Okay.
I thought I'd get it more. Thank you, sir. No problem. Somebody already declared certificated.
Yes.
I'll move that we approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the disposing of equipment. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I have nothing over item 20 that I do for one more.
Item 21, consideration of possible action on resolutions appointing receiving officers for various accounts.
I have one for free fare and one for health department.
Okay. Marjorie...
Rock Morton.
Rock Morton, receiving officer for free fare. Let's see. We have two for health department, Robin Fagan and Caishish...
Kenesha.
Kenesha, I'm sorry.
Make the motion we approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve both. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Item 22, consideration of possible action approving following permanent road crossing permits for Cox Communications. Cooksey Road, .44 miles east of State Highway 33, and that looks to be it. Make a motion approve.
Where, where does 33 and Cooksey intersect?
It's right there at Post. It's, uh, Post and Cooksey and 33 all meet right there at the same intersection there.
I'll second Cody's motion, but I would say that they put in their lines a lot of times and they don't follow the rules, and it costs us money to do that.
Well, we can go out and grade them back up.
I did, and they sent me a bill for $10,000.
Did we have to pay it?
I haven't checked back with our insurance boards.
We get, we get sent a lot of bills, so we don't have, we don't pay. Bitigous.
They still got both ends of it.
Yes, sir. All right. We're getting close to, oh. Item 23, consideration of possible action on consent agenda.
Yes, there are.
Here it comes.
Just reminds me...
You haven't seen it before.
I did it. And these been, let go. It began in... Termination letter to the...
I saw it just before I came in.
The termination letter? Termination letter?
No, 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 no.
Oh, yeah.
You ordered...
Yeah.
And alcohol.
Drum roll, please.
18-8.
It's up a bit.
Okay.
19-3. Of that, Guthrie contributed 13-7.
13-7.
Always eat, gain drink, water.
Yep. True. Guthrie's something.
That is the end of the consent agenda.
I'll move, we approve consent agenda items.
I will second.
Have a motion and a second to approve consent. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approves unanimously. Item 24, consideration of possible action on claims for payment for March 2022. Saying anything? That's why I wasn't saying anything.
Happens to the best of us.
It happens to me. Not because I put myself in that category.
That's just the average. It doesn't happen often.
What does to me? It happens early and often to me, it seems like. They're normally pretty good, but we do get it.
Only happens sometimes.
Especially if they give trees if you're on vacation or something, it makes it increase a little bit. The odds are not in our favor when our aliens go on vacation.
Right. Well, they're sick. Make a motion to approve claims.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second to approve claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 25, consideration of possible action on purchase current payments for March 2022. $1,282... current payments for March 2022. $1,282.51.
I'll move with approval.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve purchase cards. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We're getting close. All right. Item 26, comments, announcements, questions by the board of county commissioners or other county officers and department heads. I'm gonna recognize the Health Department here today. You got anything you'd like to say?
Well, I did want to mention, we coordinate the medical reserve corps, so they are volunteers that are licensed, volunteers that can respond to disasters. They did help us with our vaccination efforts. I double-checked and at this point, they're not required to have a vaccine. So, we have an upcoming meeting. I didn't get the date yet, but I'll share it with Stephen. And if there's volunteers that I would like to enroll in MRC, we'll, we'll get them in the loop.
That's great. Thank you very much. Sheriff?
I don't think I have anything.
Okay.
About you.
Thank you, sir. Madam clerk?
No.
Nope. Fine. I'm good today, thank you.
I'm good, really.
All right. Item 27, consideration of possible action on adjournment. I'll move with adjournment.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.